Good evening and welcome to the May 6th meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here. What's next?
Next would be the flag salute.
Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Quintero. Please remain standing for invocation afterwards by Rabbi Rik Scherter.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members, and fellow citizens, let us pray. Dear God, source of life and goodness, we pray for the well-being of our Glendale community. May your blessings rest upon the members of our city council. Grant them vision for our city that is both wise and kind. Guide them in their positions of leadership and responsibility so that our community may be a blessing to families, organizations, and businesses that call Glendale home. Deepen our love for our Glendale community and our desire to serve it. Strengthen our power of self-sacrifice for our city's welfare and teach us to uphold its good name by our own right conduct. Dear God, may we walk in the light of your presence and use all of our powers for blessing. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi. May we have the report, Mr. Clerk?
The January 6th, 2014 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, May 1st, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Under presentation and appointments, 3A is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, May 13th, 2014.
Ms. Spears?
Mayor Sinanian, members of the city council. For May 13th, we have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council at 9:00 a.m. Director of Administrative Services Finance, budget study session for fiscal year 2014-15. This is regarding proposed new fees, proposed fee increases and/or decreases, capital improvement program, Glendale Water and Power Capital Improvement Program, and a budget wrap-up, if necessary. In the morning, possibly, depending on council's wishes, we will also possibly do the GWP Water Rate 218 Notice, and this would be General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, update on water rates and request for authorization to commence the Prop. 218 Notice and Hearing Process for the purposes of adopting the new water rates in order to correct errors in the calculation of the water rates adopted in April of 2012. Also, that afternoon, to commence at 3:00 p.m., for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. We do have a Glendale City Council and a Housing Authority meeting. It's a joint meeting at 3:00 p.m. We have one item, Director of Community Services and Parks. This is regarding the fiscal year 2014-15 Proposed Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Home Investment Partnership Act programs. Also, that afternoon, we have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. We have a number of items. Director of Economic Development, request from the Special Olympics World Games, Los Angeles, 2015, to be a host town. Public hearing, Director of Community Development. This was continued from April 22nd. Proposed mixed-use development to be located at 507 through 25 West Colorado Street. Public hearing, Director of Community Development. This is regarding a proposed 27-unit multifamily residential project. And lastly, for that afternoon, we have a public hearing, Director of Community Development. This was also continued from the 22nd. Proposed general plan MAP amendment and rezoning of 10 properties along Fernando Court and Cypress Street. That evening, for the Glendale City Council meeting to start at 6:00 p.m., under consent, we have Director of Human Resources. This is regarding Aetna Resources, and this is for the Employee Assistance Program Contract Renewal. Director of Public Works, this is regarding landfill consulting services for the city of Glendale. We have two more items under consent. Director of Administrative Services Finance, this is the selection of our independent auditor for fiscal years 2013, 14 through 2017, 18. Fire Chief, Pre-Employment Background Investigation Services. We have either two or three items under action, depending on what council wants to do on the 218 noticing for GWP. So I'll read in the two items. Fire Chief, Glendale Fire Station 21 Tile Roof Restoration Project. And lastly, City Attorney, amending and reordering the business agenda items of the council agenda. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Spears. What's next?
3B is the proclamation designating the month of May 2014 as Older Americans Month.
Good evening.
Well, I'm Maggie Kavarian, Community Services Supervisor with the city of Glendale, and I oversee the senior services programs. And I wanted to introduce our three local area hospital representatives who advocate for our senior health and senior safety to accept the proclamation on behalf of all older Americans living at the city of Glendale. We've got Denise Miller here from Glendale Adventist Hospital. She's the Director of the Live Well Senior Program. We have Marie Philippian, who oversees the 50-plus program at Dignity Health Glendale Memorial Hospital. And we also have Pranima Panchal from USC Verdugo Hills Hospital, representing the geriatric stepping stones program.
Thank you. You introduced three people. Oh, yeah.
I have Kathy Hill as on the program. I mean, that makes sense.
Great, thank you. So I have a proclamation, and I'd like to read it for you, and I'll have Councilmember Quintero present it to you. Whereas the population of the city of Glendale includes over 40,000 residents ages 60 and older, and whereas the city of Glendale is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives, and whereas the city recognizes the value of injury prevention and safety awareness in helping older adults remain healthy and active, and whereas the city provides opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals young and old by providing information on avoiding leading causes of injury for older adults, focusing efforts on safety for residents and visitors of the city to ensure all pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists share access to safe streets, helping older adults take control of their safety and well-being by providing referrals, resources, and programs at our community centers. Now therefore, I, Zahra Sinanian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim May 2014 as Older Americans Month, and urge every resident to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who gratefully contribute to the community. I'll just add that, I don't know if there's ever anything we can do to repay our elders throughout our lives. I live with my parents. I don't know if people know that, and I wear that as a badge of honor, and thankfully they don't have to be taken care of, but you know, if that day comes, I'll be there for them. So thank you all for providing that service.
Mr. Mayor, the next two presentations, I suppose, go hand-in-hand, so I'll read them with your permission.
Thank you.
Together. C is a proclamation designating the month of May 2014 as Building Safety Month, and D is a presentation of the Building Department of the Year Award to the city of Glendale Building and Safety Division from Ron Takiguchi of the California Building Officials Board
Good evening.
Hi, thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to remind the public of the importance of a strong building department to ensure the construction of safe and sustainable buildings. And this is the first time we've formally recognized the Building Safety Month here in the city of Glendale, and hopefully we'll be able to do so much more enthusiastically in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And would anyone like to speak for the Fire Service Day, or should we do it in order?
No, this is just...
Okay. So why don't I read the proclamation into record. Whereas Glendale's continuing effort to address the critical issues of safety, energy, efficiency, and resilience in the built environment that affects our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound, and whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings, and whereas these guardians bring together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. These codes also include safeguards from natural disasters such as tornadoes, wildland fires, and earthquakes, and whereas each year, Americans are asked to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property, and to recognize that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies, I therefore proclaim May 2014 as Building Safety Month, and encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce a member of my staff, Sarkis Harapetian, and then Ron Takiguchi of the California Building Officials Association.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, honorable city council members, good evening. My name is Ron Takiguchi. I'm the building official for the city of Santa Monica, and also a board member for the California Building Officials. And a little bit about our organization of the California Building Officials. We represent city and county building officials in the state of California, and we have the same goal as all building departments in the state, and that is ensuring that life safety in construction and the built environment is afforded to business owners and residents. And we do that with the education that California Building Officials, or CAUBO, provides to building and code officials, of which the city of Glendale is a regular participant in our educational classes in not only the technical building codes, but also the administrative codes that CAUBO offers. We also provide collaboration among building officials, and what we seek in this collaboration are the best practices that allow building departments to not only be technically the best they can be, but also the most efficient and most customer-friendly in serving the citizens. In the year 2013-14, CAUBO recognized the city of Glendale as having all the measures that we feel that a building department should have, and that is having the technical application of codes, ensuring that there is safety in the built environment, and not only that, ensuring that customer service and serving the citizens and business owners is met. And one of the outstanding things that we recognize with the city of Glendale is its working with the development community in ensuring that a project from inception all the way to its certificate of occupancy is met through the good work that the city building staff has performed for business owners and residents. And therefore, I would like to recognize your interim city building official, Ms. Jan Edwards, her staff in the city of Glendale in providing the California Building Officials' Building Department of the Year.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. What's next, Mr. Kasakin?
Next item is a proclamation designating Saturday, May 10th, 2014, as Fire Service Day.
There you go.
Good evening, council, city managers, and our staff and residents here of Glendale. We'd like to invite all of you to join us on Saturday, May 10th, for Fire Service Day. It's a great day to celebrate the accomplishments of the fire department, but also invite the community to see the great value that our department serves to our community. Pancake breakfast starts at 9:00 a.m., and all the fun activities start from 10 to 2:00. We'll do live car extracations. The kids will get to play with water hoses. They'll actually get station tours. So we invite all of you to join us, and we hope to see you on Saturday, May 10th.
Thank you. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
No, sir. I think she said it all. Hope to see you all there on Saturday. It's gonna be a great day. Lot of fun.
Thank you. And I think often we lose perspective of what an important service our fire departments provide, and unfortunately, once in a while, life, you know, provides these unpleasant episodes or surprises where you remember. I remember 1999 when I was living in Emerald Isle, and I think there was a Sugarloaf Fire. Within a couple hours, that fire was huge, and you know, the whole neighborhood was given the notice to prepare for evacuation, and all night firefighters toiled, and somehow they got bulldozers up that hill. I'm still trying to figure out how that happens. And airplanes and helicopters, and wouldn't you know it, by 6:00 a.m. that fire was out. That was my first sort of close encounter with what could have been. So thank you very much. I'm gonna read this proclamation into the record and have Councilmember Najarian present it to you. Whereas the International Association of Fire Chiefs has designated the second Saturday in May as Fire Service Day, a day to focus attention on the variety of services and skills offered by the many fire departments of the United States and Canada, and whereas today's firefighters are technically trained and skilled professional public servants who perform many public services in addition to the suppression of fire, such as emergency medical response, building inspections, and public fire safety education. And whereas the public can gain valuable lifelong knowledge by seeking out and participating in fire education activities provided annually by the fire department, now therefore, I proclaim May 10th, 2014, as Fire Service Day, and call upon the people of Glendale to participate in the open house activities offered at Glendale Fire Station 21, and to take full advantage of the information provided by fire department personnel to enhance their safety and the safety of their families in the event of a fire or other emergency.
All stations are open. So visit your local station. They're all open, but all the intense fun is at 21.
The food.
The pancakes.
Yes. Yes.
Next, next is city council and staff comments.
Who'd like to go first? Mr. Quintero?
I have some comments.
Oh, yes. Mr. Najarian?
As I mentioned last week, Saturday was the 75th birthday of Union Station, and as part of that celebration, there were free train rides to Glendale and back to Union Station. I understand on the Glendale end, it was immensely successful. At the Union Station end, there was a line the entire length of the concourse waiting to get on the MetroLink trains to Union Station, and our estimates are that there were about 1,400 people that visited Glendale, got on the Beeline buses, and hopefully went downtown to enjoy what we have to offer in terms of food, dining, entertainment. So it was a very good event, and thank you to Catherine Engel, who arranged all the Beeline buses at no charge to those visitors who were coming in on the 75th birthday trains. I have another request, and just by way of a little context, I've been contacted by many residents of Glendale who appear to be surprised at the number of construction projects, the mega projects, that are going on downtown. And they tell me, they watch city council, they never saw any of these projects being discussed. And then I realized that each and every one of these mega projects is discussed at a special meeting held at 3:00 or 3:30. Those who wishing to attend are at work, presumably unable to leave their work. Those that usually turn into city council aren't so much aware that there's a 3:00, an early showing, a matinee, if you will, of the city council. I think we owe it to our residents to be as open and transparent as possible when we discuss these very important issues facing council. I understand it may add to the length of the city council meeting, but my preference is not that we rush and try and get out of here as early as possible, but present the important issues before the city and before our residents in the best way we can, and our best interests are not served by a 3:00 special meeting when project after project that are significant projects are voted on and discussed and questions asked. I think it's a disservice to our residents, and I would ask staff, I would ask the mayor, that these special meetings do not be held, that the large projects that the city deals with be placed on the regular council agenda, where residents who want to view, can understand what's going on, residents who want to speak and address the issues have the opportunity to do so at a convenient time.
Mr. Ochoa, can I ask a follow-up question? When was, were these hearings historically held during the evening session or the afternoon session?
I would have to defer to somebody who's been here a little bit longer. I think that's just, it has historically been in the afternoon. I don't know directly the answer to that question.
So this isn't something that's new or that's been practiced in the last two, three days?
Yeah, if I could probably add, just generally speaking, when we had the Redevelopment Agency, a lot of these approvals were, the Redevelopment Agency approvals, and they were held in the afternoon. And then even projects that were within the project areas, but maybe were council approvals. A lot of the projects that are in the DSP, for example, specifically the authority was given to council as opposed to a lower tribunal, and so those, as a matter of practice, came in the afternoon meetings. That's correct. It's a, it's a practice that came out of the Redevelopment Agency process.
Okay, thank you.
Those are my comments.
Mr. Quintero? Mr. Weaver? I have some. On Wednesday, April 30th, I attended the YWCA 17th Annual Legacy Luncheon, which was a very lovely event. Some wonderful people were being honored and awarded, and again, great attendance. A lot of people were there. On April 30th, also, downtown Glendale, we had Taste of Downtown Glendale, which was a very fun and wonderful fundraiser for Glendale Healthy Kids. And it was great because, you know, what better way of promoting Glendale Healthy Kids than by giving out free food, practically free food. A lot of the downtown eateries, restaurants had participated, and even businesses that weren't restaurants had put out some kind of a treat for everyone who participated in the event. I think it's a great event. I think it was not attended as well as it should be in the future, so, and I don't say that to criticize anything or anyone. I just want people to come out next year in larger numbers and participate and make this an even bigger success. On Friday, I participated in the Armenian Belief Society Gala, their 30th anniversary. And this is very significant because the DARS is one of the largest and most consistent CDBG recipients in the city of Glendale. They provide a huge social service and provide a service that otherwise, you know, the city wouldn't be able to provide. So 30 years functioning in Los Angeles, a wonderful event. Saturday, we had the Armenian Bommera Registry Walk of Life, which started from Glendale Memorial and then basically walked around downtown Glendale and back to the hospital. Very well-attended event for a great, great cause, great turnout. Sunday, we had the Fourth Annual Verdugo Mountains 10K Trail Run, and I don't know if we have anyone here that was, that organized, well, Jess.
Dan, Jess.
Jess, Jess here?
Dan's right there, though.
Dan's there. Well, Dan was one of the organizers. A truly great event. I mean, upwards of 700 people turned up for the run. This is the largest single trail run in Southern California, and it's only been in existence for, oh, we got photos, for four years. So I got some facts that I'd like to read for you, just because I want to really promote this event also. Again, turnout was good, but that trail lends itself to much higher turnout, and we want to encourage more people to show up. We had people from as far away as Arizona and Nevada, which is great. So the distance of the run was 10 kilometers, about 6.2 miles. The elevation is upwards of 1,735 feet. The top male, I guess that's the winner, was Eric Kleinwasser from Los Angeles, and top female was Heather Wilson of Glendale. It's one of our own. Oldest participant who finished is a 79-year-old, Tom Kotrowski, and the youngest finisher was Nathaniel Marco, nine years old. 124 of the runners were from Glendale. We even had runners from Minnesota and Missouri. I do want to mention those entities that sponsored the event by providing food, water, bananas. Glendale Memorial Hospital, Super King Markets, Massage Envy provided pancakes for everyone who finished the run and for the volunteers. A lot of people volunteered, 75 people volunteered for this event. So, and all of the, basically all of the local organizations, the ones that function in Glendale, like Kiwanis and Rotary and Red Cross, everyone participated. So I encourage everyone to participate also next year because it's a great event. I'll be there. I've made up my mind. I'm even gonna try to hike. I can't run, my knee hurts, but I will, I will hike all day. Okay? And last, last issue. Last week, I spoke about the Essentia Event, and it was truly a wonderful event. I'm not gonna talk about that, but I, there was a special guest there, Mr. Brewer from the HUD, who was there with an initiative to end homelessness in the U.S. Apparently, this is a countrywide effort promoted by HUD. And in our conversations, you know, I once again stressed upon him how serious the low-income housing need and specifically Section 8 problem is in Glendale, and how we need help, and he knew about it because our own department is in touch with him, and he's very sensitive. And he was, he was hopeful, and he was, you know, he was saying that there's some promising news in the offing. So I would like to request a report, Mr. Ochoa, as to where we stand with that and whether there's any development, any movement forward, because we've been trying really, really hard all this time, and I, I'm hoping for some good news, maybe next week, if that's possible.
Yes, sir. There are discussions now, so that's very well timed.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, and what's next? Mr. Kasakin?
Mayor, next item is a consent calendar, including minutes following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay. At the request of Councilmember Najarian, please pull 5B from the consent calendar.
I'll move the balance of the calendar.
Second. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian. Yes. Who'd like to?
Item B, if I may read it into the record. 5B is Director of Public Works regarding conditional vacation of a portion of the First Alley Westerly of Brand Boulevard, north of Lexington Drive, alley 234, in connection with the mixed-use project located at 409 through 413 North Brand Boulevard, vacation case number 176V. B1 is a motion directing the city clerk to set a public hearing at a special city council meeting to be held on June 3rd, 2014, at 3:00 p.m.
Thank you. I pulled this because I'd like to know what it's all about. Can someone address this? Vacation and a project that we're talking about?
Sure. Let me ask the city engineer, Mr. Galanian, to talk to you specifically about this particular issue or the general project.
How about both? I'd like to hear about both.
I guess it's related to some extent.
Hassan, why don't you give an overview of just what the project is, and then to the specific conditional vacation. Mr. Galanian can address that.
Right. There is a project, an upcoming application that will be before the council, and that a part of that application will, if approved, will result in a, could result in a vacation of an alley adjacent to the project. The hearing that is to be, to be set would be a conditional vacation of the alley should that project be approved. That project is not scheduled, so I'm not going to get into the details of it, but it will be before the council with due notice.
So it's premature to talk about the project itself?
I will leave that for the city attorney to discuss.
Well, I think it's premature to discuss the merits of it. I think if we can provide some background to it. Again, this item is just to set the hearing for the vacation, so.
I understand, but my questions are related to the timing of this. So just so I understand what we're talking about, and I haven't had any report from staff, but this is a close to 250-unit project.
So, yes.
Okay. I understand that the parking structure behind it is scheduled to be demolished.
At this point, that's, it's a proposed project, correct.
And that parking structure currently provides parking for the adjacent building at the Glendale Federal Buildings.
Correct.
Both of them.
Correct.
Okay. And there would be no, as far as we know, no additional parking for those?
The project does include parking.
There would not be, this project would not include a replacement for those parking spots that have been taken away from the Glendale Federal Buildings?
As proposed, that's correct. For, there is no replacement for one, the parking for one of the buildings.
How many parking spaces are?
I, I'm sorry, I do not know the details of the project at this moment.
Okay. My, my point is that it is grossly premature for this council to be setting a hearing, vacating the alley, when we have not heard anything about the project, that this should only come after we have been briefed and discussed the project. It would be wrong for us at this point to set a hearing in anticipation of us learning about the project and hearing its merits. So I would say that this be deferred until sometime after we have heard the merits of the project.
Let me ask you a question. Why are we setting this for a hearing prior to hearing about the actual project itself?
You know, I think I'm going to ask Mr. Galanian to answer that question. However, it's been our practice since procedurally, we're required to come to the council to set a hearing for vacations. Before we actually set the hearing for vacations, we oftentimes coordinate and we set the hearing for vacations at a time that often coincides with the time of the hearing on the project. For example, last week, you had the similar situation, that we had set the hearing, you heard the project, after the project, you heard the hearing, you did the hearing on the alley vacation.
That's why the hearing.
That's right.
The vacation is conditional. Because if the council were to not approve a given project, then you wouldn't vacate the alley.
I mean, it seems like we're rushing through this. Is there something magical that happens on June 3rd? Mr. Clerk?
On June 30th is election day.
Election day, I see. Is there any reason why we're rushing through this project to have it on June 3rd?
Project actually is scheduled before that, before the 3rd.
What date would that be?
Originally, that was supposed to be the 27th, but as.
That's the date I'm not here.
Exactly, sir. So as, as I had indicated previously, considering your strong feelings on development downtown, we are pushing this project to the 3rd, a week later, a week later, so that you, that you would indeed be here.
And again, this merely sets the hearing, there's nothing committing the council to approve the conditional vacation, it's just setting the hearing in conjunction with the other project entitlements and not out of norm with the other entitlement processing.
Oftentimes, when we schedule these things, if the project hearing gets continued, we ask the council to also continue the vacation hearing. We always schedule them in conjunction, that you get to hear the project first and make a decision, and after that decision, we have a hearing on the vacations.
One more additional question. Would this be set in a special meeting at 3:00, or would this be the afternoon hearing?
This would be the afternoon meeting per usual.
The 3:00 or the 6:00?
The 3:00, sir.
The hearing will be at 3:00. The decision on the issue will be usually at the 6:00 meeting, following meeting.
Right. But the project would be heard at the 3:00?
Correct.
Colleagues, I think, I think we need to slow down in our scheduling of these items which are interrelated to the project and its approval. There is no rush, there is no hurry. Unless I'm mistaken, is this, is this time-sensitive for the project developer? Does he lose, does he have to pay those higher fees or something?
My understanding is that the development has been deemed complete per the guideline that was given when the council increased the development impact fees. So their fees are locked in, however, to a, to the investment community, time is money. And to the extent that they can move forward, if they had their druthers, they would move forward sooner than not.
I have a, let me ask a question about that. What happens on June 3rd? It's just the elections, right? When will the election results be certified?
Mayor Sananian, the election results, the final canvas may take up to a month.
Okay. So potentially, the new council member, whoever it happens to be, may not take to the dais until first week of July. Does that mean that just because that's the case, then we have to force this developer to wait until July? It just makes no sense. It seems like then we're artificially slowing things down for an event that is, that should be a matter of course. I mean, it's just an election happening. I remember last year during the April elections, on April 2nd, on the day of the elections, there was a council hearing, and the Doran Central project was voted upon. So again, historically, there's nothing extraordinary about having a major development issue voted upon during, on election day, unless I'm wrong. Because otherwise, again, if we're waiting for Mr. Quintero, for whatever reason, not to be on the dais, that we have to wait until July, I think that's fundamentally unfair to the developer.
My point is, without getting too far afield, that until we hear about this project, we should not be scheduling hearing for the vacation of the alley. It is premature to do so. Again, what's the rush? Time is money? Well, development is money too. Successful developments mean a lot of money. I think that we should not feel pressured to put this on the agenda so the developer makes more money, which is what I'm hearing. If time is money, his delay means he makes less money. So I would argue that we not set this for a hearing until such time as we can hear about the project.
Is there a motion or?
Move 5B1.
I'll second it.
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
No.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sananian.
Yes. Next item?
Next item on the agenda is listed as oral communications. This will be the three-minute portion reserved for community event announcements.
Okay. So we have two speakers. First is Kimberly Rhodes, followed by Leon Mayer.
Mayor, city council members. My name is Kimberly Rhodes. I'm the executive director of Family Promise of the Verdugos. Family Promise is a nonprofit organization that assists homeless families and children. I'm here today to invite everyone out to attend our Empty Bowl fundraising event that will benefit Family Promise of the Verdugos. The event will happen on June 1st at Glendale First United Methodist Church. At this time, I'd like to share a public service announcement with you. Thank you. Family Promise of the Verdugos presents the Fourth Annual Empty Bowl Fundraiser, Sunday, June 1st, at First United Methodist Church of Glendale, 134 North Kenwood. Arts and craft sale opens at 11:30 a.m. Lunch is served 12:00 noon to 2:30 p.m. Tickets are available on our website or by calling 818-296-9770. Join us for an afternoon of food, fun, and community fellowship. Enjoy a bowl of soup, bread, and drinks donated by fine local restaurants. Take home your handcrafted ceramic bowl made by local artisans as a reminder of the hunger and uncertainty homeless families face daily. View art for sale by local artists and take a chance on opportunity baskets. Proceeds will help end family homelessness in our community. The 2014 Family Promise in People, together we can end homelessness, one family at a time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor Sananian, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the Library, and here to announce our upcoming event, The Crusades of Caesar Chavez by Miriam Powell, which will be held on May 28th, 7:00 p.m. at the Glendale Public Library. We urge anybody and everybody who comes to park your car in the structure across the street to the north of the library to get validation for three hours. We expect a good crowd there, and I think it'd be important that you feel that you'll have no parking problems when you come. Now, The Crusades of Caesar Chavez by Miriam Powell is a comprehensive biography by a lady who is a Pulitzer Prize winner. She's won and been involved with two Pulitzer Prizes. She's a Los Angeles Times writer, and she's been doing it for 25 years. Now, Caesar Chavez founded a labor union, launched a movement, and inspired a generation. He rose from immigrant worker to national icon, becoming one of the great charismatic leaders of the 20th century. And he did that, among other things, through the mechanics of non-violence resistance. He was a follower of Mahatma Gandhi from India. And he was born in 1937 in a small town in Arizona. He died 60 years later, and he had quite a life. And millions of people remember the grape boycotts and the lettuce boycotts, and they were successful. And the whole country was behind Caesar Chavez during his conflicts to start a union of the farmworkers in the country. Now, Miriam Powell will, not only is becoming famous over this book that she's written, she's written another author of The Union of Their Dreams. That was one of the first books she wrote about Caesar Chavez. But this was, the present book is the first real deep biography about it. And she, just recently, was at USC Bobert Auditorium and won the award for the Festival of Books at USC. So we are really honored to have a lady of her caliber come here to Glendale and talk and sign and sell her books. So we're looking forward to people coming there and joining themselves. This event is co-sponsored by the Glendale Latino Association. No charge, of course. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a brief announcement as well about another event that will be taking place at the library. Also, this is an event that'll take place on Friday, May 16th, 7:00 p.m. It is a screening of a program called Digging Into the Future, featuring Armenia. This is an archaeological expedition to Armenia. It turns viewers on to the thrill of discovery while making genuine human connections with people's past and the present. Armenia is the first journey of a new proposed PBS series that merges archaeology, science, and humanity into an hour-long, entertaining, educational, cultural adventure that spans the globe. For this adventure, Rosendo joins archaeologists from UCLA's Katson Institute, which is dedicated to the creation, dissemination, and conservation of archaeological knowledge and heritage. Charles Stanish is the institute's director, and Gregory Arashian is the director of the institute's Armenia program. And Rosendo crisscrosses Armenia to ancient sites where some of the world's oldest artifacts have been discovered. Some individuals who have studied the history, and we know that the world's oldest discovery of containers containing wine was discovered in Armenia, the world's oldest shoe was discovered in an excavation site in Armenia, and the entire country is a living, breathing museum. So this should serve to be an interesting program. It'll take place at the library on Friday, May 16th, at 7:00 p.m. The people interested can contact the library for more details. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what's next?
Next item on the agenda, under eight action items. Eight A is city attorney, discussion of comments attributed to councilmember Weaver in the Glendale News Press article on April 17, 2014, relating to allegations of inappropriate workplace comments. This is an oral report.
Okay, Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this was a request of the council to have a discussion on this item regarding comments that were attributed to councilman Weaver, as the agenda item discloses that those comments were referred to in the Glendale News Press. And the council last week asked for discussion, and so we brought, we agendized this for you. I have no further report to give.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Quintero?
Okay, I'll read part of the statement. It's issued on behalf of councilmember Najarian, Friedman, Quintero, and Mayor Sananian. As your elected council members, we are custodians of the public trust. It is essential that we not only adhere to all laws, but that we model behaviors consistent with the intent behind state and federal laws, organizational policies, and ethical business standards. It is important to us as council members and you, the community we serve, that we hold one another accountable for our actions and for deviations from the values we espouse. The city of Glendale operates under anti-harassment and anti-discrimination policies that require our employees to show sensitivity and respect for all members of this organization and community. It was disturbing for us to read the allegations against Mr. Weaver in the Glendale News Press relating to a private matter regarding allegations made by an acquaintance of his. Generally, this is Mr. Weaver's personal business and not ours. However, in the Glendale News Press story, Mr. Weaver freely admitted that he used inappropriate sexual language in an interaction with city hall staff. The language used by Mr. Weaver that was described in the article is inappropriate and in violation of the city of Glendale's workplace sexual harassment policy. It is unacceptable, and as council members, we felt our obligation to speak out and publicly record our disapproval.
Mr. Najarian?
As an organization, we have taken great strides to protect our employees from any form of harassment, including the use of inappropriate language. Our employees receive training on workplace harassment routinely. Although the recent controversy that triggered the News Press story surrounds a private matter involving Mr. Weaver, it is the cavalier and demeaning comments made by Mr. Weaver in the paper that appalls these council members. It is apparent he was not then, nor is he now apologetic for his inappropriate comments, and there is the need for Mr. Weaver to understand how truly out of line his comments were. By failing to acknowledge his mistakes, Mr. Weaver undermines the trust granted him by the citizens of Glendale who elected him to office. His actions have not fallen deaf on the balance of your city council, and we condemn him for failing to take responsibility as a city council. As your city council, we strongly urge Mr. Weaver to conform his conduct to the law, the city's policies and procedures, and respectable business standards. We further recommend that he attend sexual harassment training.
Unless you have any of the cards, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if the council wanted to make a motion to formally adopt that statement.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the statement just read.
I'll second it. Vocal, please?
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Epstein.
Mayor Sananian.
Yes. Next item?
Next item is fire chief regarding purchase of next-generation 911 phone consoles for the Verdugo Fire Communications Center. B1 is a motion authorizing purchase order from the state, required vendor AT&amp;T in the amount of $101,000.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This project is to purchase six workstation consoles for purpose of answering 911 calls of the Verdugo Fire Communications Center, three of which will be cited at the Verdugo Fire Communications Center, and three of which will be cited at the Disaster Recovery Center for continuity of operations at the Burbank Police Department for Verdugo Fire, should we have to vacate our con- should we have to vacate our comm center for some reason. The project is funded by the Verdugo Fire Communications Center budget.
Can we have a motion?
I will move the item.
Second.
Vocal, please.
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sunanian.
Yes. Next item?
C is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding Glendale Water Power Energy Trading and Risk Management System Implementation, ETRM project. C1 is Motion Authorizing Execution of Agreement with Allegro Development Corporation in amount of $2,797,629 for enterprise software and license and service agreement. Statement of work for implementation service Allegro University License Exhibit and purchase of hardware. The Structure Group Task Order in amount of $1,182,653 for project management and implementation service during fiscal year 2014 through 2016. And amendment to the PSA Agreement -- sorry, PSA extending the termination date to June 30th, 2016. And ACIS Power Marketing Task Order in amount of $225,000 to gather and configure reference data under the existing PSA for a total amount of $4,205,282.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Steve Lins. I'm the Chief Assistant General Manager for Glendale Water and Power. And tonight, I'd like to present to you staff's recommendation for a new Energy Trading and Risk Management System, or ETRM. I'm using that acronym quite a bit. I've got a short, six-page presentation. First, for various reasons, the existing ETRM really just doesn't meet the needs of Glendale Water and Power anymore. That existing system was purchased in 2002. We've had several system failures, and at this point, the vendor isn't even supporting the software anymore, and it's not capable of capturing several forms of data that we need in our business, including carbon and renewable energy credits. So in December of 2012, we started an extensive selection process. And in your report on page three, I'm not going to go through all the detail, but there is a table of all of the events that happened since December 2012. We put out a request for proposals. We received eight proposals. We put together an internal team to evaluate those proposals. Prior to actually putting out the proposal, we hired Structure Group to assist us in putting together the RFP. They worked with our internal team of the Energy Management Group, Audit, Legal, IS, Finance, Grayson, all the departments across the city, much more extensive than I've ever seen before. And they actually came up with 667 functional requirements for this system. And a lot of that has to do with trading, but much of it has to do with integrating with systems throughout the city, like emissions data from the power plant or financial data in the finance department. So we went through that process, and four vendors were shortlisted. Those vendors had to go through a demonstration process, two days each, two solid days of each of the four vendors, demonstrating to us how their systems could meet the most important of those 667 functions. They were evaluated on functional criteria, qualitative criteria, and then cost criteria. And at the end of the day, Allegro was identified as the best solution. In addition to all the evaluation factors on the functional requirements and cost and qualitative criteria around how they're perceived in the industry, here are a few other reasons why they are a good choice. They are the recognized leader in ETRMs across the country. Many of the biggest utilities in the country are using Allegro for a trading system. They're competitively priced. They have a strong product history. Their usability is very well-regarded, and they're already used by ACIS, who is our real-time trading manager. So that's the first portion of what we're talking to you about tonight. The second portion is Structure Group. Structure Group has been successful on two of our RFPs. The first one I mentioned was an RFP before the whole process started in September 12 to help us with the process. When we finished that process and got to the point of making a recommendation, part of that negotiation with Allegro was deciding how are we going to implement this system and integrate it with all the departments so that those 667 functional requirements actually work. And it was decided that we need someone to help us manage that project. So we put out another RFP. We received two responses to that RFP, and once again, Structure was the winner of that process. And we will be requesting that you authorize us to bring Structure in for that implementation of the ETRM as well. And finally, as I mentioned, ACIS is our current real-time trading manager. They've had an agreement with us for, I think, seven years now. We've got a couple more left on it. It's about $550,000 a year. And part of what they will have to do is integrate our new system with their system so that they can manage our real-time trading. So we're asking for three things tonight. One is an agreement with Allegro for $2.8 million. That covers a 10-year period. An agreement with Structure Group for $1.2 million, which is an intensive effort over the next two years to implement that system, 18 months to two years to implement it. And then finally, to allow us to add a task to our existing contract with ACIS for $225,000 to implement that system with their system. This is on a time and materials basis for ACIS. We actually don't anticipate hitting that $225,000 mark, but that's a worst-case scenario. There's a lot of detail in the process, and I've got staff here if you'd like to go into any of the functional requirements, but that's what we're asking for tonight.
Yes, Mr. Quintero?
I'd like to ask a general question. How are we doing with our energy trading? Are we making any money?
Well, this current fiscal year, we're at around the $2.5 million mark. But I think what's more significant is the money that the group is saving for our retail customers. And we've done some recent trades that are, you know, over the $10 million range, actually $28 million over the next 10 years in that area.
So we haven't lost any money?
No. And Mr. Quintero, maybe my ultra-conservative nature, I kind of put a spin. It gave me a little bit of heartburn when we thought about trading to make money, when ultimately, we want to make sure that the lights go on every single day and every single minute of the day. But at the same time, as Mr. Lins indicated, the ability for us to look at things a little differently that allow us to save money over some of the energy we're currently buying, and by doing things a little bit differently and buying ahead and things like that, that has been very successful.
Well, that's a problem, that obviously the trading, you know, the misnomer that somehow we're trading for profit, that's not really, really what we're doing. We're just securing natural gas and other commodities so that the rates balance out over a period of years.
That's correct. And we've actually removed any kind of incentives to hit targets on trading. Our budget now for net revenue from wholesale trading is actually zero.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question, unless Mr. Weaver has a question?
No, no.
He doesn't. Okay. I have a question. So it looks like all three of -- all three contracts have an implementation component to them. But from your presentation, am I correct in my understanding that each sort of has a different aspect of implementation? One is implementing the software. The other is, I guess they're going to, it's only two-year contract, they're going to participate in the initial implementation?
They're essentially going to serve as our project manager.
Project manager for only, this is only two-year.
For only two years, till we get it up and running and our staff becomes comfortable, both our staff and GWP and IS staff as well.
At which point, we will not need their --
We take that over.
We're not going to need their services.
Correct.
Okay, that's important. And then the last one is sort of their, they're not, that's not a redundant implementation, right? That's their, the current one, so we're.
They're currently working with us, and they do a lot of our, they do our real-time, they're our real-time trading manager. But what they're going to do is allow us to make sure that we get our data, because they're pretty familiar with not only the, very familiar with the Allegro system, but they're also very familiar with our trading, and they're going to be able to mesh that information much more efficiently, we felt. And as Steve mentioned, it's a time and material basis. To the extent we need them, it's kind of a safety net, if nothing else.
And what happens with the ACIS contract after fiscal?
Well, they'll keep continuing to provide the function that we have them under contract with now. Whatever money we save from this particular aspect goes back into the budget.
I see. So we'll be looking at a new contract, probably?
This is just an amendment to them, but at the end, I think they have two years left.
Yes.
At which time, we'll go back out to competitive bid for that particular function and be back to you.
And there's an excellent breakout on page seven at the top. It's a table that breaks out everything that each of the three are doing for the project.
Do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll move the item, 8C1.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Caro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lins.
Next. Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay. We have one speaker, Mr. Richard Lieboff. Please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor Sunanian, other honorable council members, City Manager Ochoa, City Planner Higani, and other staff. I am Richard Lieboff, a 35-year resident of our jewel city of Glendale. As you well know, recently, you approved the creation of the Brockmont Park Historic District, Glendale's sixth historic district. The reason I come before you this evening is that, in my opinion, and that of others, including city staff, the historic district ordinance created about seven years ago now needs to be tweaked. The reason I conclude this is that near to the time of your approval of the Brockmont Park Historic District, two of the residents on Valley View Road, both of whom, I might add, did not sign the ordinance and are contributing homes, submitted plans for major changes to their homes. As you might expect, they slipped in, if you will, under the wire. Inasmuch as their changes under the current ordinance need only go, therefore, before the Design Review Board and not to the Historic Preservation Commission. In the case of one of them, which has been reviewed by city staff and is scheduled to go to the Design Review Board and not to the Historic Preservation Commission, and it is going, in fact, this Thursday evening to the Design Review Board, they are proposing to tear down their house. And again, I emphasize that their house is one of the contributing houses built, in other words, before 1956. In the case of Brockmont Historic District, four of the nine eligibility criteria were met, which, of course, allowed it to go forth and to receive your approval. I and my neighbors don't want to see contributing homes and existing landscape removed and/or demolished. My recommendation to you, especially to you, City Manager Ochoa, is that the Historic Preservation Ordinance be reviewed by city staff and include members of the community to make their views known through the establishment of an ad hoc committee of city residents. I, for one, would be most willing to serve and be part of this ad hoc committee. I think it's a serious matter, and I don't think that we should see historic homes and homes that are contributing homes raised. And I think it's something that you need to take action on quickly. And as I indicated, it will go before the Design Review Board on Thursday evening, and naturally, I will be there to comment and my concerns. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Lieboff. That's all the cards that we have. What's next?
Unless there's new business.
Rejoined?
Okay. Rejoined at 7:08 p.m.